I call this meeting to order. Please stand for a flag salute in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
Mrs. Guzman, roll call, please.
Commissioner Moroz.
Present.
Commissioner Pollock-Rude.
Present.
Commissioner Circo.
Present.
Commissioner Sotile.
Present.
And Commissioner Vias notify staff that she'd be absent today.
Thank you. Welcome to the Elkhone Planning Commission meeting. This meeting is being livestreamed on the City of Elkhone website. Appeals of final decisions of the Planning Commission made this evening must be filed in writing with the city clerk before 5:00 p.m. Friday, July 29, 2022, and must include the payment of a filing fee. If you wish to speak on either a non-agenda or agenda item tonight, please fill out the Request to Speak card, which is located, I believe, right out there on the podium, and turn in the secretary, who will call you up to speak when the agenda item comes up for public comment. We ask that you give us the spelling of your last name. Speakers are limited to three minutes. The display on the podium, as well as the other monitors in the chamber, will show time counting down. At 30 seconds, the podium clock readout will turn red, signifying you have 30 seconds until the end of your time. Applicants and individuals representing groups of people may be allowed more time if appropriate. All public hearing comments should be addressed to me as the Chair of the Commission and not to individual commissioners or to staff members. Please turn off all electronic devices if you haven't already done so. Pursuant to City Council Resolution Number 114-79, a commissioner who has received evidence related to a matter before the Planning Commission other than an unescorted view of the subject property is required to disclose such information. At this time, we will take comments from any member of the public on any item of business within the jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. Under state law, no action can be taken on items brought forward under public comment except to refer it to staff for administration or place it on a future agenda. If there's anyone that would like to come forward now and address the commission under public comment, please do so. Okay. Did we have any public comments prior to the meeting? Okay. Thank you. All right. At this time, we will move on to the consent calendar. A single motion will cover all items on the consent calendar. Does the commission wish to pull any items?
No.
Staff?
Uh, no.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt the minutes as recorded.
I'll second.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Circo, seconded by Commissioner Pollock-Rude. Please vote.
Sorry, can we get... Sotile, I'm sorry, we were a little late starting it. Can I have your vote again? There it is.
And just for the record, I reviewed the last Planning Commission meeting, and so that's why I adopted the minutes.
Thank you.
Motion carries by unanimous vote of members present.
Okay, great. All right. Tonight, we have quite a few things on the agenda, and the first one is the Oakdale and Mint subdivision. We also have a few other items. What I'd like to do is suggest to the commission, maybe with a motion, that we rearrange those and get rid of the other agenda items first so that we can give the speakers who are here on Agenda Item Number Two all the time they need, and allow those other people to leave the meeting if they choose so.
So move.
Okay. So I make a motion to change the order in the sequence of discussion tonight, and second by Commissioner Sotile. So with that being said, let's just go to Agenda Item Number Three. Everyone that's here for Agenda Item Number Two, we just have some business to take care of, and we're gonna let those applicants come in first, and then you guys have the floor for the whole night if you'd like.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, just to clarify, so we have a motion by you to rearrange the agenda, taking Items Three, Four, and Five first, and then moving Agenda Item Number Two to the end of the agenda.
Correct.
And then I have a second from Commissioner Sotile for the modification to the agenda. Staff would just request that we vote to confirm that rearrangement of the agenda.
Absolutely. Okay, and motion carries.
Motion carries.
All right. So Agenda...
Motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Three, Ponchos Mexican Grill to Establish On-Sale Beer and Wine Alcohol Sales. It is CQ exempt, and staff recommendation is approved. Staff?
All right. Good evening, planning commissioners. The first item for your review tonight is Ponchos Mexican Grill On-Sale Beer and Wine. The applicant is Manuel Espinoza. The project proposes on-sale beer and wine at an existing restaurant with drive-through facilities. Their operating hours are between 7:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. daily. However, beer and wine sales would end at 9:30 p.m. The property is located in the general commercial, general plan designation and also the general commercial zoning designation, and there is an existing conditional use permit which authorized that drive-through facility, as well as discusses interconnecting access between that restaurant and the commercial shopping center, thank you, that is located. This is the subject site. It is directly north of Multifamily Residential in the solidly commercial district. There's also some mixed multifamily and commercial uses across the street. This is 777 Broadway. This is the provided site plan for the project. Again, this restaurant has existed at this location for decades and decades, and they came in, I believe, in the 2000s for the drive-through facility. This is the proposed floor plan, so there are no changes here other than they're calling out the point of sale at the sales counter, and then a couple of coolers where the beer and wine would be kept. In terms of regulations from alcohol beverage control and then our response from Elkhone Police Department, alcohol beverage control authorizes nine on-sale licenses within this census tract, and they reached that number by taking the population of the tract divided by the ratio established for San Diego County, which I believe is 739 persons. They divide that by the tract population, and they reach this number. There's currently four authorized on-sale locations in that tract. The crime rate is high, however, unlike what you're probably familiar with with off-sale, like liquor stores, zoning code does not prohibit Planning Commission from approving an on-sale location in a high-crime area. Police has commented and recommended approval, and that this would have no impact on their services. Further conditions of approval require that they take responsible beverage training courses and turn those into the city that they've completed them. It also generally requires compatibility, so if there's any nuisance issues in the future, we could bring that back to the Planning Commission to consider revocation, and other conditions, for example, require that alcohol be served in conjunction with food sales. And with that, the recommendation is to approve conditional use permit Number 2022-006, subject to conditions, and we're available to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions for Spencer?
No, it seems pretty straightforward. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Great. Do you guys have any questions for the applicant? Okay. All right. Well, let's go ahead and open public hearing and then close public hearing. I make a motion to close public hearing?
Are there speaker cards on this one?
Not on this item.
I did old school. I looked at the applicant and said, "You want to come up?" And he said, "No, I figured that we were done." Okay, so no speaker cards. I make a motion to close public hearing?
I second it.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Moroz, seconded by Commissioner Sotile. Please vote. Do you guys own the one on East Main as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, yeah, they have beer there. It's nice to have one while you wait for your food.
Cool. Well, you guys have great food. Thank you.
Any comments? Questions or concerns? All right.
I'll make a motion. Oh, you want to go ahead? I'm sorry. Go ahead. Okay. Okay. I'll make a motion, move to adopt the next resolution in order approving the CUP 2022-006, subject to conditions.
I'll second.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Sotile, seconded by Commissioner Pollock-Rude. Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote of members present.
Thank you. All right. I guess now you got to go to the state and do all that type of work, right? Well, thanks for doing business here in Elkhone. We appreciate it. All right.
The next one.
All right. Agenda Item Number Four is Botani Familia Pizzeria, and it is a conditional use permit, It is to establish on-sale beer and wine alcohol sales. All right.
Correct. Yeah, so very similar to the one we just reviewed. This is the Botani Familia Pizzeria. They're requesting on-sale beer and wine, submitted by Haytham Botani. This pizzeria operates between the hours of 11:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. It is in the neighborhood commercial general plan designation and the neighborhood commercial zoning designation. The site address is 665 Hampshire Road, and you'll see here it's surrounded primarily by single-family residences to the north, a religious facility to the east, a neighborhood commercial shopping center to the west, and then more residential and commercial to the south. This is the site plan provided. They recently received final of their building permits to operate the pizzeria there, and this is the proposed floor plan, limited seating, mostly just a small pizzeria. So in this case, alcohol beverage control authorizations are eight, and again, those are determined by the population in that census tract. There are currently, however, eight active licenses in this census tract. Just similar to the discussion about crime rate, there's nothing in the zoning code that would prohibit Planning Commission from making a decision to approve this request for on-sale at this location. I will note as well that five of those eight licenses are with two locations only. So, for example, Elks Lodge holds two of those licenses, and the Junction holds three of the licenses. So there's only five establishments that hold the eight licenses, essentially. Police have also reviewed this application and recommended approval, that it would have no impact on their services, and nearly identical conditions in this case, that if there's any ongoing issues, that the item could come back to the Planning Commission for revocation potentially, that they take the responsible beverage service training courses, and that they generally comply with all the conditions and zoning code requirements. And with that, the recommendation is to approve conditional use permit Number 2022-0007, subject to conditions, and we're here for any questions.
Great. Yes, Commissioner Circo?
All right. With ABC having eight licenses, would the ABC also be determining whether or not to grant this additional license?
Yeah, that's part of their review, and just for... just to point out as well that, for example, the Parkway Plaza Mall technically has an over-concentration of on-sale, as does the downtown area. So ABC can approve an over-concentration as the Planning Commission can.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Why would a single location have more than one license? For what purpose?
So, for example, certain types of on-sale licenses allow contractors to come into a location to serve alcohol. That would be one example. So for Elks Lodge, in their case, they might have a license that allows someone to come and serve alcohol at one of their events where they are not actually serving the alcohol themselves. That's one case. In some instances, due to the type of alcohol that's served, it might be a different licensing requirement. Those are a couple examples.
Okay. Thank you.
So to understand, so they may have two licenses. One could be for beer and wine, and one is for when they have caterers come in and serve alcohol.
Correct.
And then one could be for, which it doesn't sound like they have, hard alcohol, which I would assume is a different license.
Correct.
And that's the same thing for the Junction. They probably have to have all three. So really, we've got five businesses out of... nine is the, you know, kind of the standard.
Yeah, so, yeah, five businesses holding eight licenses.
Okay. Great. Any questions? More questions for staff? Okay. Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
None for this item.
Okay. Is the applicant here tonight? Okay, so I do not see the applicant. All right.
I don't believe so.
Okay. Well, close public... open and close it again. All right. I'll go ahead and open public hearing. Seeing that there's none, I have a motion to close.
Close public hearing.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Sotile, seconded by Commissioner Circo. Please vote. Okay.
Motion carries by unanimous vote of members present.
Well, that makes sense to me. Not very many seats, though, so I don't know if they do a lot of to-go business. But, all right. Any comments? If not, then I move to adopt the next resolution in order approving CUP 2022-0007, subject to conditions.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Moroz, seconded by Commissioner Circo. Please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous votes of members present.
Thank you. All right. Let's move on to the next. All right. Agenda Item Number Five. Project name, Noronca Three-Unit Development. This is a new common interest development for three single-family detached residents. The project number is PUD 2020-001 with tentative parcel map 2021-0002. Staff?
All right. So, yeah, this is the Noronca Three-Unit Development, submitted by Robbie Mika. The project proposes a common interest development, so that would mean the establishment of an HOA with CCNRs. It proposes three detached single-family residences with two-car attached garages, private yards, and through the tentative parcel map, this would be a four-lot subdivision, so the three residential lots plus a common lot for the driveway and common parking, or guest parking, and it would also include a maintenance easement that the HOA would look over the driveways, the parking, and some of the landscaping. The general plan designation is Low Density Residential, LR. It has a conforming zoning designation of RM 6,000. That's the residential multifamily 6,000-square-foot zone. Calculated out, it's approximately seven dwelling units per acre, which is well within the expected density of the LR designation in the general plan, which is between 3 and 10 dwelling units per acre. The project site is 18,808 square feet, or just shy of half an acre. It's currently vacant. However, there was a single-family home there that was quite dilapidated and an ongoing code enforcement issue that was recently demolished. And the project site is adjacent to Forester Creek, and there's a large easement area that you'll see on the site plan for Forester Creek. I'll also note, as discussed in the staff report, the pad elevations of the homes are above the base flood elevation per FEMA, and so there's no concern there or no special requirements other than certifications for those pad elevations for flooding. This is the subject site. It was addressed 1325 Noronca Avenue. To the north, there's a handful more RM 6,000 zone lots. Just up the street, there's another planned unit development, almost identical to this, three units, common lot for a driveway. To the south, you have the Interstate Eight. East, RM 6,000, single-family residences. And to the west, there's a CG zone property with two homes and, I believe it's a vacuum shop or something like that? TV repair, excuse me. This is the proposed site plan. So the three units are essentially the same design, just oriented differently. There's a common driveway down the middle with guest parking off of that. All the garages are accessed off that private driveway. And then again, the large easement area to the rear. This is the proposed tentative map, and you can see those lot lines, how they're laid out. The lots range from about 3,842 square feet to 5,252 square feet, and that range is largely kind of determined by the large easement area. Some of those lots contain a lot more area than the others. With one exception, the proposed PUD meets all the development standards of the PUD's zoning code. So in terms of density, we discussed it's about seven dwelling units per acre. Setbacks require 20 feet, proposed is 20 feet for the front, garages 20 feet, proposed is 20 feet, and then the other setbacks are determined by the PUD itself. So the rear yards are about 14 feet, and side yards are proposed at about 5 feet. It's fairly consistent with the RM 6,000 zone as a whole. In terms of building height, the proposed height is 20 feet in line with the RM 6,000 zone. In terms of covered and visitor parking, this meets the parking requirements, two covered parking spaces and one guest space per unit. Waste collection is individual collection, so they have a concrete pad shown on the plans for where that would be stored. Fencing, in this case, it's proposed to have a six-foot boundary fence. It should be noted that we see some other PUD developments and PRD developments with a proposed CMU wall instead of a fence in a lot of cases, but this is consistent with what the PUD requires, either a fence or wall. Open space requirements are met. Open space ranges from about 1,025 to 1,800 square feet per unit. The street and driveways meet the minimum requirements of 24 foot wide for backup space and traversing. And then lighting, a lighting plan is a condition of approval submitted with the building permit. The one exception is for a concrete sidewalk, so the PUD zoning code section states that guest parking should have a poured concrete sidewalk to each of the units. In the case of such a small development, that access is just provided in the shared driveway, essentially. You'll note on the elevations that there's a shallow pitch for the roof to meet that 20-foot height limit. The design is primarily stucco finish with kind of heavy, bold trim around the windows and door features. The proposed color scheme is brown and tan earth tones, and then it meets all the zoning code requirements for variation wall planes for some visual interest. And so here are the proposed elevations. I wasn't sure when I was originally looking at this, I wasn't sure why those colors looked so familiar, and then I put it on the slide, and I became immediately apparent. Sorry. They matched our color scheme for our PowerPoint. Sorry. So the recommendation is that Planning Commission recommend that City Council approve the CQ exemption for infill development, planned unit development 2020-0001, and tentative parcel map 20... I'm sorry, 2021-0002, subject to conditions. And we're here for any questions you have.
Thank you. Can you put the site picture, like the satellite picture, back up for me, please?
Thank you very much. So, question. It looks like there's a lot of lots there that have more than one dwelling on it. Most of the houses up there, are they all separated by wood fences for the most part or vinyl? Something like that?
I'd say so, yes.
Okay. And so with keeping the wood fence there, I'm assuming that it would just kind of match the rest of the neighborhood instead of a CMU, which, you know, is a lot of times used between residential and commercial, I know. But I wonder if it would be better to have that wood fence there to kind of match the rest of the neighborhood, you know? You would go into a neighborhood, and there's a big, you know, brick wall around one house, but not around 40 of them, you know? So I like that you have that flexibility for that. That makes sense. That makes sense that you didn't just stick them with that. Any other questions for staff? Comments? Okay. Do we have any speaker cards?
None for this item.
Is the applicant here tonight? Come on down. Let's go ahead and open public hearing.
Good evening.
Can you give us your name, spell your last name?
My name is Robbie Mika.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. How are you doing tonight?
Good, good. Thank you.
Good. How's the process been for you getting this thing done?
It's taking too long, but finally, at least we are here.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, well, good. Well, I'm glad that we could help you out. I want to make sure you read all the conditions of approval, and if you had any questions about them or concerns, or you're okay with staff's recommendations.
I'm okay with, yeah. No question for me, yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Mika?
Okay.
Okay, well, the project looks nice.
Thank you.
Are you going to keep all three houses the same color? Are you going to mix color schemes up?
Oh, no, no. Same. Whatever the planning tell me, I will do exactly the same. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool. Yes.
Just have one comment. I really appreciate the fact that you are keeping the existing tree.
Yeah, I'm trying, yeah. I'm trying. I don't think it's affecting the building, so I'll keep it, yes.
Yeah, and it's so hard to keep trees, especially old-growth trees. That's going to provide shade across that all afternoon, so, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
That's great. Okay, well, we're happy to have you adding some more single-family dwellings here, because that's good. That's for good neighborhoods. We like that. Would anyone else... any other comments?
Nice-looking buildings.
Thank you so much.
Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Good luck with your project. Anybody else care to come down and speak on this agenda item? Come on down.
My apologies. This is my first time ever going on.
Come down. You can speak, and then when you're done speaking, just fill out a speaker card for us would be great. Give us your name, spelling of your last name, if you don't mind.
Good evening. My name is Javier Del Real. D-E-L-R-E-A-L. And I was blessed enough to purchase a home, and it's the one right next to the property of Mr. Robbie. We become friends. We, you know, we've kind of...
Nice.
My question is just the parking, how the parking was going to be set up, because I'm going to be right next to him. So I was trying to look at the development, but I don't know if maybe you guys can kind of give me an idea of what I'm looking at.
Spencer, why don't you pull that back up and walk them through it if you don't mind?
Definitely. So it'll be a little bit hard without a pointer here, but essentially, so to the north of this plan is Noronca Avenue. You would enter off of Noronca, and essentially, the first home has... they all have two parking spaces. So basically, where those homes touch that private driveway, the hatched area, that's where the garage essentially is. So in that first unit, it'd be... I don't know if I can... you know, if I stand up and point? Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
So, I'll just yell?
Yeah.
Yeah. So the first entrance is here for a two-car garage, second entrance here for a two-car garage, third entrance here for a two-car garage, and then there's one guest parking space here, one guest parking space here, and one guest parking space between these two homes. So a total of nine parking spaces.
So right to your... to the left, a little bit to the left, your left, yeah. Right there is my house, 1329?
Okay.
Okay, so what's going to be dividing my property and theirs?
Right, so there'll be a wood fence here.
Okay.
And there's a wall retaining wall right along... Uh, and there's a wall retaining wall right along right here.
Okay, alright. I just didn't know if that was gonna be a parking or something, I mean, like, I mean...
Well, you know, what's nice is he's actually parked everything inside the pro- the property, which is great. It's, you don't see a lot of three-parked...
Yes.
Built developments anymore. You know, we should, 'cause we still have cars.
Yes.
Um, but, so I think that was a, a good move there. That's good design. I like it. What do you guys think?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, okay.
Yeah, that was my only, you know, question and stuff, so.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, seeing that there's no one else that is coming down for this, I make a motion to club, close public hearing.
I second it.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Moro, seconded by Commissioner Sotile. Well, commissioners, what do you think?
Well, I move to approve.
Anyone wanna banter about it?
Any banter? No, there's no banter on this one. I think we all think it's fabulous. What do you think?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, I think we had a motion and a second to close the hearing, if we could, um, have the vote to close the hearing?
Oh, that's right. That's on me. Hey, it's my first time back as chair in a while. Definitely knocking the cobwebs off.
Motion carries by unanimous vote of members' presence.
Great.
I will say that, uh, I live on the other side of the block if Interstate 8 didn't go through, and so I've walked around and rollerbladed around the block and looked at that property, and I saw how big that was, and I was like, "Oh, that's so sweet." So, I, I'm glad it's going into single-family homes, and I'm very, very pleased the applicant is keeping the trees in there, 'cause we need more trees. Elkhorn has lots of trees. I love the view coming into Elkhorn.
Yeah.
And, uh, so, that's all I have to say about that.
Alright. Anything else, fellow commissioners? Okay. Well, at this time, then, um, I'd like to get a motion.
I motion to approve the planned development PUD number 2, 2020-001, tentative parcel map 2021-002, subject to, there weren't any conditions on that one, were there?
Is your mic on?
Oh, it's on.
Okay.
My mic's just broken.
There you go.
Um, and there were no conditions on that one, were there?
Right, just subject to the staff conditions, so.
Subject, subject to the staff conditions.
Okay.
Wrong button. I will second that.
Motion made by Commissioner Pollock Rude, seconded by Commissioner Circo. Please vote. And...
Motion carries by unanimous votes of members' presence.
Thank you. Alright. Good luck.
That moves to city council.
Yep, off to city council, which I'm sure they'll be happy to see what you're doing as well. Thank you. Thanks for your patience. Now let's get back to agenda item number two. Okay, Oakdale and Mint subdivision. This is a two-lot subdivision in the RS6 zone. It is SEQA exempt and staff recommends approval. This was continued from the last public hearing we had. Um, I don't remember the date on it, I don't see it there. Um, staff?
May 3rd.
Was it May 3rd? Okay.
Great. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so Commissioner Sotile is correct. Um, this item is a continued public hearing originating from, uh, May 3rd of 2022, when the planning commission, uh, first heard this item. Um, the purpose for the continuance was really to allow the applicant sufficient time to look at alternatives and then to gather information, including cost estimates, um, and look at options for environmental review. Um, as you may recall, uh, one of the issues of contention was whether or not, um, the road, uh, should be, should be constructed and go through connecting, um, Oakdale and Mint avenues. Um, so in response to the continuance, uh, the applicant, uh, did work with staff. Uh, we met, um, the, the following, uh, couple days after, uh, the hearing. Um, the applicant's engineer participated and he produced an alternative site plan, uh, for the city to evaluate. Ultimately, uh, the city responded with comments and, uh, the applicant decided, uh, not to proceed, uh, with the alternative plan, um, and to go forward with the plan as was presented, uh, at the May 3rd Planning Commission meeting. So on the next slide here, um, what you can see is the alternative plan that was proposed. And so the alternative plan that was, uh, proposed, um, essentially, uh, it left, it clo- it would propose to close the street, and then it proposed to have, uh, curbs and sidewalks basically adjacent to the, um, open, uh, area that's there right now, that would basically go in front of, uh, where the road would be proposed to go through. And then a, um, a wall was proposed as well, uh, that would restrict access through and across the property to prevent people from driving across or from, um, gaining access. Um, the, the plan was also reviewed by, um, Heartland Fire and Rescue, and one of the issues with Heartland Fire and Rescue is that, um, a fire department turnaround, uh, for fire apparatus is required, uh, when you have a driveway that's in excess of 150 feet. And so the issue, uh, of providing access, uh, from Mint, um, next to Macon, is that, uh, that road as it exists is essentially 150 feet. And so, a turnaround was proposed. The turnaround was shown on this plan, uh, but, um, Heartland Fire and Rescue determined that it wasn't sufficient as proposed. The other issue with the preliminary site plan was, uh, there's existing SDGNE overhead power lines that run along, um, the north side of the planned, uh, street. And so one of the, um, issues that was identified as part of the preliminary staff review was that, uh, coordination with SDGNE with regards to an easement would be necessary to make sure that they are, um, that they could support the placement of that wall and the restricted access to the property. So essentially, what staff was able to do is just to provide those high-level comments. Um, and the applicant ultimately said, um, "I, I've investigated this additional option. I've looked at it, but I don't want to invest additional time in working with my engineer to further revise this drawing. Um, I've made the decision that I want to go back, uh, go forward with the road, uh, connecting and have the straight two-lot subdivision." So, um, so what I want to do now is just move back to what was proposed on May 3rd. Um, and, uh, and so we'll go through the project description, the overall general plan and zoning regulations, and then, uh, maybe at the end I can answer any questions about the alternative plan. But essentially, the project description is a proposed two-lot subdivision. Um, the unique, uh, shape and size of the property is because it's former, Caltrans right-of-way, which was, um, sold to the applicant. Um, the proposal is just for a straight, uh, two-lot parcel map. Um, so it's, the previous application that we just reviewed was for a planned unit development. That's where you have the private road providing access to the individual lots. This is just a straight two-lot subdivision fronting on, uh, the city street with the right-of-way being dedicated for access. So as conditioned and proposed by the applicant at this time, uh, it is to include the street improvements connecting Oakdale and Mint avenues. So the general plan designation for the property is low-density residential, and the zoning is RS6. So that's, uh, one unit per 6,000 square feet of lot area. So the overall lot, including the area where the roads proposed, is, um, about, uh, nine tenths of an acre, or about 38,000 square feet. Um, currently vacant, it's, uh, it's all flat, and, um, it's situated, obviously, between those two streets. Uh, we have Forester Creek on the north, uh, which does provide some constraints. So here you can kind of see that unique shape. Uh, this is the general plan map, again, showing, uh, the low-density residential general plan designation, uh, primarily surrounded by, um, low-density residential, single-family homes. Um, there are some, uh, multifamily, um, developments further, uh, to the west, as well as, um, some commercial properties once you get out to the blue line, which is East Main Street. So here's the aerial photograph of the subject site. Um, it, again, shows the flat topography of the surrounding single-family zones, and then, obviously, um, the road, um, connection, uh, with Oakdale on the left and, uh, Mint Avenue on the right.
So that site goes all the way through to where the, the line is there?
Mm-hmm. So the area, um, that's proposed for development, when you subtract out the proposed road, um, equates to about 30,000 square feet, uh, 20,000, 29,800 square feet, um, exactly. Um, and then the area dedicated for the street would be about 8,500 square feet of lot area. Um, I wanted to note for this slide, uh, that the building outlines, uh, for the single-family homes are only shown as concepts. Uh, any future development would require a building permit, uh, but that would be a ministerial permit approved by staff, so they could make modifications, um, to the locations of the buildings that are shown here. Um, there wouldn't be any additional, uh, public hearings. If, if this were to be approved, they, they would, uh, just be two, uh, vacant lots, and then they could just come in and build single-family homes as they saw fit. So in terms of the surrounding context, again, the site's primarily adjacent to other single-family parcels in the RS6 zone. Um, surrounding parcels are relatively uniform in shape and size. And then given the zoning code standards for street frontage and the dedication requirements, um, essentially with a straight subdivision as opposed to the planned unit development, it would really only qualify for two parcels. So I want to talk a little bit more about the road improvements and, um, a reimbursement agreement that is included as an attachment to the staff report. Um, so typically, um, for new single-family development, a property owner is responsible for, um, half-width street improvements. Uh, but in this instance, because the road, um, doesn't go completely through and that the property owner owns the entirety of the planned, uh, public road, uh, the project is conditioned, um, to build out the entirety of that road connecting. So, um, staff, um, understood, uh, the constraints related to that, and so we worked with the applicant and the city attorney's office on a reimbursement agreement. And so the reimbursement agreement, uh, what it would allow is that if the property to the south of the planned street, uh, were to develop, um, that property owner, uh, would essentially reimburse this applicant, uh, for the cost of her, of the half-width street improvements, um, south of the subject site. So typically, uh, the term for reimbursement agreement was five years. Um, the applicant reached out to staff and said, "Can we make that longer?" Uh, we worked with the city attorney's office, and we agreed to extend that up to seven years. Um, but that would give him the opportunity to, like I said, uh, recover some of those costs, uh, from development.
So, just so I understand, understand this, and maybe you can pull up the map. Is there another slice of land that was Caltrans, or is this just if the next neighbor decides to pull a permit, they're gonna be forced to, not forced, but they'll be included in that?
So the property to the south, um, is actually also a former Caltrans property, um, that was purchased, uh, by the adjacent single-family homeowner. I believe, um, that she's present in the audience and spoke at the previous hearing. Um, but it is, um, available for development, and if it were to develop, that's when, um, if the applicant decides to move forward, sign the agreement with the city that, uh, we could compel the reimbursement.
Okay.
And, um, I have a question. Uh, what happens, uh, after seven years?
After seven years, there would be, um, no requirement from the city for reimbursement, so the applicant would just be compelled to, um, absorb the costs from the public improvements.
Okay. So that's the window, basically, I guess, if, okay.
Just a couple more items, if I may. Um, so, um, the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under, as an infill project, and so this is kind of one of the important distinctions that we talked about at the last hearing. And so an infill exemption from SEQA says that you have to be under five acres. You have to be consistent with the general plan and comply with, so, other zoning ordinance and development standards. And so, uh, one of the issues, uh, that we talked about at the last hearing was that, um, if the road were proposed to be eliminated from the general plan, um, the applicant would have to do a general plan amendment. And if the applicant proposed a general plan amendment, this SEQA exemption would not apply. And so the applicant would need to go through and do a more detailed environmental review in order to, um, look at issues of access or, you know, planned, um, delivery of services through fire and the police department, and any other impacts that may be associated. So, it's difficult for staff to be able to describe all those without going through the process. So one of the challenging things, I would say, with the alternative plan is that we've looked at it at a high level, but, but we can't give you all of the details of what would be required, uh, because he hasn't gone through that process, and we haven't solicited, um, those comments. Um, but ultimately, um, the applicant chose not to move forward with the general plan amendment, so this is, as proposed, exempt from SEQA. And so, in order to make the findings for the map, um, staff is recommending approval, uh, because, uh, it does comply with the general plan and the zoning, and the road is planned to go through.
Yep.
So, uh, the staff recommendation, as shown here, is just to adopt the next resolutions in order, approving the SEQA exemption and then the tentative parcel map, uh, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
And just so I understand correctly, th- this will be, this is the final, the map will be done. He still has to go to the planning department and show the plans, show the street. The street doesn't go in until the project goes on, up, correct?
Correct. So essentially, um, if this action, um, is approved tonight, um, as recommended by staff, um, the tentative parcel map would be approved, and so the applicant would submit to the public works department for, uh, the final map, and then, uh, there would be the requirements to build the road in conjunction with the future development of one single-family home, two single-family homes, or even single-family homes and accessory dwelling units.
Okay. But it would all be done at the same time, more than likely, when the houses were being built? In other words, is that, can, what triggers the road? Does it immediately go in, or is it when you start your project, the road's gotta go in, kind of thing? How's If that makes sense, I'm, I, I think I'm being clear, I just...
So, repeat that question again?
So, so basically, once it's approved and then, and the new map is finalized, and he doesn't build, let's say, for two years, we're not putting in a street the next day. We're putting the street in when the construction project starts, correct?
Starts, yeah. So before he gets a certificate of op- occupancy for the building, that's when he would have to put his improvements prior to that.
Okay.
So...
Alright, that's what I need. Uh, thank you. Alright, was that it? Okay. Uh, any
I do have one. I, uh, did Google Earth, and in the corner of, um, Durham and Oakdale, in the southwest corner, there's a, a fire hydrant. And also, I looked at the map, and the, the distance between Oakdale and Mint, where it's on, not developed, is 131 feet. And the fire trucks, um, water hoses are 1,000 feet. Uh, why would they need an access to turn around if there's no street gonna be built, since the 1,000 feet would be more than sufficient to fight a fire?
I don't know the specific answer to that question. I do know that in conjunction with development reviews and in coordination with the fire marshal and Heartland Fire, the standard for the fire department turnaround is, uh, when you have a dead-end street in excess of 150 feet. So I think it, um, although, um, the fire hoses can go much further than 150 feet, I think it is an issue of, um, access for the fire apparatus, the fire truck, and being able to sufficiently and safely, uh, maneuver that truck in and out of a development.
Hmm, 'cause in that corner, a fire truck can turn. I mean, there's plenty of room to do that, where Durham and Oakdale meet.
Yes. Um, so what I was trying to reference in, um, in the review of the alternative plan was that essentially, uh, where Mint, uh, from Macon on that corner is approximately 150 feet over to where, uh, the alternative plan proposed to have the driveway access. And so that's where, uh, when Heartland Fire looked at that plan, they said, "Okay, that's more than 150 feet now that you have the driveway going back, so we need to have the turnaround." Whereas, uh, with the roads connecting, um, and the public right-of-way, uh, being in front of the single-family homes, um, they have that 100, well, there's no need for a fire department turnaround because of the circular, the circulation in and around that subdivision. And then, uh, Fire looked at the extent and depth of those lots and confirmed that, uh, based on the length of their hoses, that they can provide, uh, fire service to the, to the back of those lots.
And where, exactly where the, where the wall was going to be?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Exactly where was the wall going to be built?
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be a great idea. Maybe the one, the, uh, the one, the actual, uh, map. You wanna see the actual satellite map?
Yes.
Yeah, go to the satellite one.
And show us where the wall was gonna be built.
Yeah, so it's right there. Okay, where would that be on the, uh, Spencer, if you wanna go to that one?
So essentially, where the site, the vacant site is, um, is right now...
Okay.
It would be set back, um, approximately 20 feet, uh, from where the road barricades essentially are.
It'd be right in there.
Right there would be the wall? Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. Alright, I got it. So the wall would be blocking, uh, fire protection. How high...
Here's the mean from, from that corner is the 150.
The 150. The 150, okay.
The challenging thing with the alternative plan was the issue of fire department access because, you know, one of the comments that came up when we were routing was, why not just subdivide the lot down the middle and have one property access off of Oakdale and the other property access off of Mint? But the issue there is that you have, if that were to be proposed, you still have the fire access issue from Macon to the terminus of Mint because you're still exceeding that 150, so you still need to have some sort of fire turnaround. So we brainstormed all of these issues with the applicant, as well as their engineer, and tried to point out all these issues, especially as well with the overhead utility lines and the access. They ultimately came back with this alternative plan, which we commented on, but there could have been a range of options. They could have looked at other fire department turnaround options with, you know, the lot going down the middle, but ultimately, they said, we don't want to proceed any further, we want to go back to what was, you know, brought to the planning commission on May 3rd. So obviously, there would be a ton of options that could be explored, it's just that as staff were tasked with bringing forward what the applicant would like to bring to the planning commission and evaluating that.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Alvey? Okay. Well, at this time, I'm sure we have some speaker cards. So why don't we start with opening the public hearing and hearing some speakers?
And we have a total of four speaker cards. Can I get Delhi Shahab to speak, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Uh, no, fine, thank you.
Good. I do have a quick question for you. When you left here last time, you mentioned you were going to maybe reach out and talk to some of the neighbors, and I was just curious if that ever took place.
Yes, actually, I reached out on a Facebook group platform, and I mentioned about the cost, and the cost was a significant amount of money I don't have, and I asked for support. Unfortunately, I didn't get a response, and then that point was a decision to make, move forward the first plan as proposed.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I noticed you did try another engineer drawing, it looks like, and then it was just, it wasn't making it.
No, that didn't work out due to the cost. I looked for any type of grants, as I recommended last time. Unfortunately, I'm not qualified for it. Due to, I don't have any builder experience, I'm not a developer itself.
Mm-hmm.
That was a straw for me, so you know what? At that point, it's just moving forward what I had proposed prior to.
Okay, great. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, no, thank you. I appreciate you reaching out and, you know, trying to get something done there.
All right, thank you.
You bet. Okay, next speaker card, please.
Carly Flot. Hi, I'm Carly Flot, F-L-O-T. I live at 1550 Mint Avenue, which is right next to the lot, east of the lot. I was here last time for the last meeting. I'm here today representing all of our neighbors that can't be here to oppose Dell's plan in having the road go all the way through. I'm not going to go over everything again, you guys know where we stand. I will tell you, in probably the last 45 days, so sometime after our last meeting, the fence between the lot and my house is broken. In the 45 days that that's been broken, we've had more drug activity in front of my house, which I have police reports and pictures of, because of the transient population that's now freely walking down my street to our side of the neighborhood. So I just feel like that's a small kind of glimpse of what's about to happen if you guys allow this road to go all the way through, in addition to my child who likes to play outside. She won't play outside anymore. Like, it's, I know I got emotional last time, but this really hits home for us, you guys. This is our neighborhood. It's our neighborhood, and I'm all for him building a home for his family, but opening this street up negatively affects our neighborhood in so many ways. And I just, I know that there has to be another option, whether it's the road ending, or I don't know what it is, but it just does not seem fair that we have 100 signatures from neighbors that are in opposition of this road. 100. I have 100 signatures. That should mean something to you guys. I don't know what else to say.
Question for you. Are the homeless people congregating on that lot as well and doing their drugs there?
Yeah, so it's a lot of people passing through on their bikes, and they ride through. I have pictures of people sitting in front of my house doing drugs. We kick them out all the time.
Do you think if that thing has a nice property built on it, do you think they would tend to not be there? Do you think it's the lot itself that's bringing them in, or do you think it's just the route?
The quick access in and out. So once they come across Mint, they can get lost. Like, we've had a lot of drug activity, what is it, over by the, I don't know if it's SD Genie at the very end? There's another, like, dead end further into the neighborhood, and we've had a lot of drug activity get stuck down there. So it's like, they come in, they do what they have to do, and then they make their way back out. But it's just, it's just beyond frustrating.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Flot?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you. Question, what, real quick, no, what is currently holding, I mean, what, the separation, what's there now? Chain link?
Yes, and there's some road, wood road barriers, I believe, as well.
And that was Caltrans to maintain prior to the sale, correct? It's for the last however many years. Okay. Okay. Any speakers?
Norma Murphy.
My name is Norma Murphy, M-U-R-P-H-Y. My address is 1572 Mint Avenue. On behalf of what Carly had just mentioned about the drug activity, that's just a small portion. Unfortunately, I was going to bring retired Lieutenant Murphy here from San Diego PD to speak on the increased not only traffic, accidents, crime, which she's already seen it with that broken fence. I honestly, in all due respect to you, do not feel those are valid reasons to put a road through. I also spoke with fire department. It's easier coming down Madison. That reasoning, I mean, I'm sure he got it from somebody, but I've spoke with somebody who works for the fire department, and they're like, no, it's easier going this way. It's not a, like, we need this, we got to get through this way. I don't think Mr. Dell has any idea as to the crime that it will bring. If he had a cul-de-sac and he had a sign saying, "Not a thorough street," people might think twice, but I don't think he has any idea of what traffic he's going to get, crime, and drug activity, all that stuff. So, you know, my thing is, we've all grouped together and we're going to fight it till the end. Despite what happens today, it's not going to be the end, because we have to protect not only our children, our grandchildren, and ourselves, my neighbor. I understand this has costed Mr. Dell lots of money, but sometimes, children, kids, and people are worth a lot more than money. I'm just saying. I mean, to me, you know, money's nothing. It comes and goes, like that. Family does not. So, like I said, goes through, I'm sure, I'm sure there's other alternatives. He built one house six months, put a block down the middle of one house. It's been done many times, duplex, I don't know, whatever. But there has to be somehow that, I see no reason, no valid reason has been told to me today or last time as to why that road has to go through. It's been, I don't know. Tom, how long have you been there?
Fifty years.
Never had a problem before. We, and everybody's a tight neighborhood in our neighborhood. We watch and take care of one another. And once that open, it's open game. I don't know. I really think there should be another resolution. That's not a good one. And like I said, we'll fight it to the end. We ain't going down without a fight. We got to protect our families, that's important.
I have a question. Mrs. Murphy, that road has been in the general plan since it was implemented, I think it was in the 80s? 85 or so?
It's been part of the, the road, the planned road has been part of the, of the general plan.
For a long time.
Correct. And see, and I think I mentioned last time, when that was brought up to my attention, my thing is, why was that not disclosed to us by the house there? I asked, I asked my license agent when I bought that house, because I had small kids at the time. And I asked, oh, no, 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 it's environmental, blah, 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 and this and that. And I thought, okay. We got all documents on my parcel, lot, size, you know, this and that. You know, we got school, you know, ratings, we get, if there's a pedophile living near us, but why wasn't that disclosed if that was in the plan over 40 years ago?
Yes.
I'm a licensed Realtor. In regards to stuff like that, it's not, Realtors not have that jurisdiction, so if it's not in writing, we shouldn't say it. A general plan is something that should be discovered by the owner, it's your due diligence as a homeowner to look that up. I can't give that information to you because I'm not, I'm not, I didn't make the general plan. I'm sorry they didn't tell you that because, or to promise you that, because they literally can't. We're not even supposed to go to the city to get that information for you. We're supposed to direct you where you can go, if you have any questions or concerns. And I definitely would have had a concern about that, because it is on the map, when you look at the Google Maps, you'll see it there, but it's not developed. But your agent shouldn't have promised you that, and the biggest thing in real estate, if it's not in writing, it doesn't exist. And I know with the preliminary title report, it has a lot of information on your parcel itself, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't have anything on that. It would be something you'd have to discuss with the city to ask about, you know, what's the status of that road.
Once again, why not? How am I supposed to know that, oh, I'm supposed to go to the city to see if by chance this is going to be an open road?
That's the unfortunate thing of why we're here today, because he's, he probably didn't know that either, because he-
We were totally misled.
Yeah.
Okay. So now, okay, so Caltrans was going to have, years ago, wasn't there a freeway going to Caltrans, right? Was there going to be a proposed road back then?
I don't know, because I-
I mean, you know.
I mean, I know that the general plan is general knowledge, that any person could check in our neighborhood.
But why, how would we know?
Well, your agent should have, your agent should have told you, no, please check with the city, you know, I see it might be the general plan, check with the city if you're concerned about that road. If that was a concern, it should have been, they should have directed you where to go to look, to make sure, and not told you, oh, yeah, yeah, it's fine, because that's why we don't do that, because it's just not ethical to say that, so I apologize for that. But we're not, if we have any information you're concerned about, we need to direct you where you need to go to find it, since we don't know. You know, we're just making implications that aren't right. So that's why with the general plan, it's in there, so if you're concerned about it, and it's been there for quite some time, we always say, well, I would check with the city or the planning department or what have you, to get that information, to make sure, so you can say, well, I came here and you gave me this information, but, you know, I apologize that your agent said, oh, no, because they, they wouldn't have known.
Well, that's a shame.
Yeah, it is a shame.
That's a real shame.
I know.
So now, you know, can't change back time?
Yeah.
All we can do is-
And I feel bad for him, too, because he's kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place, because he didn't know either. Now he has to build a road that he doesn't want to build, but he's spent a lot of money, unfortunately, so.
True. But, you know, like, that's, that's a whole different situation, because he went in blinded. I didn't.
Yeah.
You know?
I apologize.
You do your research, unfortunately, I failed that one.
Yeah.
I apologize.
It's a shame.
All right. Any other questions for Mrs. Murphy?
I'll just observe that, living on Oakdale between Second and Main, we get a lot of traffic, both in front of our house and behind our house on that Forester Creek drain, and we've had to make lots of police calls because of activity in our backyard. The scariest one was when we had people walking through our backyard with flashlights. So I totally understand. I've got four children under 14, and they play in the backyard, but not the front yard.
But that's one of the reasons why I didn't move to Second Street or Grant Hills, you know, for that reason. So I did my homework there. But, you know, it's, and with law enforcement, we ain't going to have that now.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, it's sad.
Yeah.
But anyways, I thank you for your time, and I appreciate your time.
Okay. Yep.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just clarify one thing. You know, as part of the alternative plan that was submitted by the applicant, you know, staff was willing to look at options for closing that road, and really, it's the, the requirement is the state-mandated process that we have to go through to close that road. And so as staff, what we're tasked with doing is looking at what an applicant brings forward. So originally, he came forward, proposed to have the road connected, that's what we brought forward on May 3rd. In response, you know, we heard the concerns from the public, as well as the applicant, and he looked at that alternative plan, and we were willing to process that, continue to give him comments and have it move through that state-mandated process to evaluate closing that road. The issue is, is that in order to close that road, we'd have to get those comments and go through that process and evaluate any environmental impacts or service impacts and other things in order to bring that back. But ultimately, that's a decision that's made by the applicant, and as city staff, we're mandated for reviewing what the applicant brings to us.
Right.
So I just want to be clear that it's not, it's staff evaluating the general plan and looking what the applicant has brought forward, and we've been willing and open of working with the applicant about other options for closing that. It's ultimately the applicant's decision to come back and say that he wants to connect the roads as required by the general plan, as a decision, as a developer, looking at his costs and impacts.
Right, yeah. No, it's kind of, it's kind of the perfect storm, because like you said, with the applicant, he was trying to build a dream home, he wasn't a developer, and got caught by the same thing. I did have a question, tip of my tongue, when I think of it, I'll ask you again. Well, thank you for sharing.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Any more speaker cards?
Timothy Swain.
I live on Trenton Street. I've lived in this area, and I live in one of the model homes for that whole development I've been there for 45 years. When I was taken through that area, when I was 10 years old, that was a marsh. Forester Creek came down off the hills, and that was a marsh. The state of California had bought up all the lots along Third, going over there to where Mint and Oakdale are, for a proposed highway. That highway was an extension of the highway that comes between National City and Chula Vista, and it was to run into Interstate 8. All of that area was proposed in 1950. How many of you people were five years old in 1950? I was. This is a debacle. We have a problem on Trenton Street from that piece of land to the east, behind the residences on Mint Street. If you put a picture- If you put a picture up there of the aerial, there on the screen, you see that stretch of houses, from the back of his lot, from the eastern edge of his lot, going across, all the way over to where, where Trenton and Jade connect. That was a single house back there that got moved off by the owner, and he wanted to move in. Houses taken away from Caltrans right of ways. We stopped it. He had to build new houses in there. Only what they are is duplexes. We have a ton of traffic coming out of there, coming down Trenton to Madison. I talked with your local law enforcement last week about this problem. I also talked to your public utilities people about the problem of the sewer in that area. Many of my neighbors have mentioned to me, they keep finding cockroaches in their bathtubs and showers, when they're away from home for a weekend or so. I found it when I came back from the hospital for a week. You have a problem with the sewer in that area, you can't take care of that. There's no sewer line going from Mint to Oakdale. So now you're gonna have to put a sewer line across. There's no water line going under there. There's no gas line going under there. Who's gonna pay for all of this? You got, you got a real problem here. Opening that up, now you're gonna create more traffic, coming down on, from Trenton, making a right on the Mint, making a bonsai to get down to Main Street. You're just gonna create more problems. When the state put the property up, the city of Alcoa Home, should've made the state donate it to the city for park. Just like the deal the state pulled with the city of Alcoa Home, and took Fifty-Six, which is Hammershaw, and ran it on the Second Street, made no parking on Second Street, so they could get to the freeway to eliminate that highway that was gonna go down through Third. Many of you people have been around long enough. Just east of there is Granite Hills High School. That was my uncle's cornfield during World War Two. I'm not new to Alcoa Home. My family's been in this county a hundred and twenty-seven years. Your Main Street out here is historic Highway Eighty. My great uncle was our congressman from nineteen twenty to nineteen thirty-six. He's the reason Highway Eighty came to San Diego. And it comes right through Alcoa Home. We're part of historic California. Let's eliminate some of this newer development, and solve the problems we have in the city of Alcoa Home. And the problems we have are partly with the departments within this city. As I told the council last Tuesday. Put on your boots, put on your coveralls, roll up your sleeves, put on your gloves, and get out there and see what your public works and your street people are doing.
Thank you, Mr. Swain.
Instead of sitting in your offices and rubber stamping things. Thank you.
Thank you. And God bless you for your service. Any other speaker cards?
Yes, Martha Avery.
I am the neighbor to the south. I'm Martha Avery, A-V-E-R-Y. I'm the neighbor to the south of Dell's property. And I just need some clarification, um, on the finances. What I heard was that, that the street will go through, when all is said and done, and that Dell will pay for it. And I didn't get that seven-year thing, but I don't need to, I don't think. And that if I do improvements on my property, is that correct? Then I will be responsible for something. Just to let you know, I'm in the process of dividing my property into three lots. I have enough frontage, and, um, that's what I plan to do. I've got the preliminary reports already. I just had to wait till this meeting to decide what to do. So if I proceed with doing that, which will require me to do in front of my, on the Durham Street, uh, do sidewalk gutter, will I be responsi-, what will I be responsible for?
That's a, that's a great question.
New Mint or Oakdale, whatever we're gonna call it.
Can you give me your spelling of your last name again?
Avery. A-V-E-R-Y.
Thank you. With that question in mind, I also have a question. Where, right now, her property, can you point out where her property actually is?
See the trees?
Yep.
Okay, that's my property, but there's a fence going, that's my property. That whole thing, all the way to the, there's two houses on it.
Okay.
And I want to do, I just wanna divide it into three lots. I, I'm not planning on developing the lots at this point, but I wanna have three instead of one.
All right, so can you, so that's her, that's her, her, her line is basically the fence, which will be where, kinda where the curb and gutter is, it looks like.
Right, right, where those, where those bushes and-
So that's your lot there?
Mm-hmm.
The next one over, and the next one. There's two, and then three.
And then, Mr. Chairman, you can see the curved line that kind of bisects through the center of that.
Yeah, what's that all about?
Uh, that's also related to Caltrans excess right of way. And so the triangular piece, um, that is up adjacent to the subject site that we're talking about now, uh, was also former Caltrans right of way.
Yeah, I bought that several years ago.
Great. Okay, so what, what I'm understanding then, is if she goes to do improvements, let's just say, for the sake of arguments, that this first project wasn't proposed, and it was just her. Would she be forced to, to do a street as well, if she split those three up? Not forced, I mean, would it trigger the general plan to kick in and finish the road? That's really what that is, what's happening.
So she's responsible for the public right of way that is adjacent, uh, to her, um, uh, the land that she owns. And so, if a project were to be submitted, it would be reviewed and conditioned essentially for half-width street improvements per adopted city standards. So, the issue though, is that the city, um, can't compel private development, or development, um, on private property, right? And so if the, if the property, the subject site that we're looking at now continued to be private property, wasn't developed, and that, uh, that property owner didn't dedicate, uh, the street connection for public road purposes, the city wouldn't have authority to condition that, uh, to make changes to that street.
Okay. And so I think the other question then, would be, Ms. Avery has, is, when, if she decides to split that up, like you're talking about, right? Map it out, split it up into a third.
Yeah.
Would she then trigger that agreement, the seven-year agreement, to pay for half of the road?
Potentially, yes. And, and also if at the same time, the, um, if an application were to be submitted to develop the lot to the south, at the same time that the applicant were to be doing his public right-of-way improvements, it could potentially be conditioned, you know, if the right-of-way were to be dedicated for each property owner, just to do half-width street improvements. So ultimately, it's a function of the time of the applications, uh, the conditions at the time that they want to build, and, and how the city then applies those conditions of approval. Cause there's obviously multiple scenarios that can play out.
But she could be responsible for half.
I'm not talking about building at this point. I just wanna divide it. There's already two houses, and those would be separate now. And then there'd be just a big, empty lot. And I, I, like I said, I have no intention-
Like a lot split, is that what that'd be considered, just a lot split?
So, I think ultimately the answer is, is the city hasn't received a development application for, for the property. And it's challenging for staff to be able to dictate what conditions of approval may look like. It's something that needs to be analyzed in conjunction with a review by all disciplines.
Okay.
Well, the engineers who've done the preliminary have already talked to somebody. And I have to do a, see where the sidewalk ends? I have to go, go to Mint or Oakdale with a sidewalk.
Okay.
But that, that's just required to split the lots, and is that considered improvement? And is that triggering me having to pay for some of the street?
So a development application, um, when it's received to subdivide the property, uh, would be reviewed by the Public Works Department. And then, um, conditions of approval for, uh, based on adopted city standards for that type of street would be required for curb gutter and sidewalk, and then for like current ADA accessible, um, driveways and so forth. So, so yes, it would be conditioned to that effect. But the precise, um, details of that, as it relates to easements, SDGNE power lines, water and sewer lines and other things, uh, would also need to be evaluated and incorporated into any conditions.
So, so what I'm understanding is that it could be, you, it may be possible, it may not. And the only way you'll really know is to submit, it sounds like someone's working on it, submit that to the, to the city for, for review. You know, obviously you're, you're, you're having to invest some money there. But at the same time, you wanna know if you're gonna be, you know, investing more money, right? And you need to know that as well. But it doesn't, because there's a lot of factors, it sounds like what I'm hearing is that it's the best to just submit something over, uh, drawing, you know, I, uh, from the engineer department, let them take a look at it and kinda come back with what they're gonna require.
Okay, if I do nothing, what's my obligation? My financial obligation, if I just-
Zero.
Zero.
And if you wait seven and a half years, it's zero.
All right.
If there was, if there was, like I said, a responsibility, which doesn't sound like we can really pin it down. I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
Any other speaker cards?
Ms. Avery, if you have any specific questions, please contact us at the Public Works Department. And, uh, one of our engineers will help you. Our private development can walk you through all the steps.
Thank you. Any other speaker cards?
Yes, can we get David Bagalini?
Hi, I'm David Bagalini.
Can you spell that last name?
Bagalini.
How you spell it?
B-A-G-A-L-I-N-I.
Like it sounds, thank you.
So I bought my house on Mint, at corner of Mint and Mason, six, six years ago. The reason I bought it is because I had knowledge, when I worked at SDGNE and the county of San Diego, that, that the state was gonna put a freeway through there, and that property closed everything off. It was gonna be a nice, quiet street. And I wouldn't have to worry about, uh, people from, uh, Second Street coming through there and all that. Anyway, to make a long story short, that's the whole reason I bought that piece of property. Now, in the nineteen fifties, that, the state of California has shown on the Thomas Brothers' maps, that it's gonna be a freeway. When I left in nineteen eighty, from the SDGNE to go to work for the county of San Diego, it was still on the Thomas Brothers' maps. So, and I know you guys had this plan since the eighties, I don't know if it was eighty-nine, but, uh, that's the reason I bought that piece of property.
Okay.
Is because it's gonna be a nice, quiet piece of property. And nobody wants that road to go through. We all are there because the road didn't go through. We were pretty sure it wasn't ever gonna go through. So, we, and I know Paul over here, he doesn't want it to go through. He made that known at our last meeting. Right, Paul, you remember that? I remember.
I remember. I remember.
So he doesn't want it either. So, anyway, that's, that's the whole deal. We just don't, we don't want it, for a lot of reasons. We've been there a long time.
Yeah.
Me only six years, but he's been here a long time, they've been here a long time. Carly is right next door to it. So, she's got kids. That's all I have right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speaker cards?
No.
Okay. Well, seeing that there's, uh, no more speakers, I make a motion to close public hearing.
I'll second.
A motion made by Commissioner Moreau, seconded by Commissioner Circo, please vote. All right, thank you. All right, and if, if anyone has any further, uh, questions or concerns, we can always reopen it. Well, fellow commissioners.
This is one of those where I wish we had more, more power. I mean, we don't have the power to change the general plan. I wish we did. And this is not something that is going to automatically go to the city council. Uh, city council has the, the, if the city council took the initiative to investigate the general plan, they could amend it, but there's nothing in this to trigger that.
Yeah, however, what I was thinking too, is there's an appeal process with the city council.
Yeah.
Which has to be filed by the, I believe, the twenty-ninth of July, which would then put this kind of on the radar. Um, I, I mean, it's kind of interesting. He doesn't really wanna build the road, he wants to build his house, but he has to build the road. He can't afford not to build the road, understands, and then, and I understand everybody's position here. You know, I, I had one quick question though, if you don't mind?
Don't mind.
If you could go to the map again, uh, the, the satellite, excuse me, that's, that's the easiest one. Okay, so when you look at the, when you look at the property, right where your cursor is, if you take that cursor and you start right there, and you draw, you put a, uh, you, you bring the road and then you, you stop the road at the top, right there, does that require a city turnaround there? Because it's less, wouldn't that be less than a hundred and fifty feet, or what is that? Is there gonna be an easement? I mean, what's the distance? I'm just curious to that.
It, the comments from, uh, Heartland Fire and Rescue were, um, that, uh, for the driveway coming in from that side, because of the distance being a hundred and fifty feet, um, that the ultimate driveway would go, that they wanted to see a fire department turnaround. So I'll point to the hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah. So are you? So right there, so, okay, so that, even if you put a wall on that side, it's still past the one fifty, is what I'm, I'm guessing.
I mean, ultimately, the challenge is, is that, um, we gave these options to the applicant and the applicant's engineer. They came back with a singular proposal, um, and that was looked at for fire access, and comments were given back. There's many, many options that could be proposed. Like we talked about, it could be access only from Oakdale, one lot by Oakdale, one lot by Mint, uh, with the road closure, and then looking at fire access. The applicant chose not to explore that, and so I don't have the ability to say whether or not it could work or couldn't work. I, I do know that, um, that we would be open to evaluating any of those options. It's just that the applicant has said he doesn't want to go forward with that application.
Okay. Commissioners.
You know, at this point in time, uh, the appeal, if there's gonna be an appeal, would have to be made by the applicant. And it doesn't seem like the applicant wants to go through with an appeal. I mean, this is what he's requesting, is to go ahead and, and split those two lots, and have the road. And so far as, uh, the general plan is concerned, you know, it can't be changed. Like you said, only the city council can change it. So I, at this point in time, I feel that the commission's hands are tied. We, we really don't have a good cause to turn this, uh, proposal down. Uh, even though, even though I, I, my heart goes out to the people in the neighborhood, and I, I see their point, however, it's beyond our authority to, to, to reject it.
Yeah, I mean, um, yeah, I think it was, uh, Nora, are you right? Your name's Nora, which one's Nora?
Norma.
Norma, yeah. No, I agree, and you know, for, for us, um, I think this probably does need to be elevated to the council's attention, because- because they do have the power to take a deeper look at this. You know, we don't have any findings that tell us why this thing can't be approved. Uh, just like we didn't have any findings for the on-sale or the three homes. I mean, those, those fit in the box. And so I, it's, it's, yeah, it's kind of a rock and a hard place.
However, our, our decision tonight is final. It doesn't wanna get moved to the city council.
Right.
Unless there's an appeal.
Right, okay. Alright, anybody else?
This is one of those where, uh, we had something similar happen in the Tres Lomas district. I don't know if you remember that, where an applicant was putting forward a development of three houses on a single lot.
Five, actually.
Was it five?
Yeah, it was five.
And, uh, the neighbors all pushed back. And they came before the planning commission. And we said, you know what? It didn't fit the neighborhood. The hard part here is the house fits the neighborhood. It's the street that doesn't. But the street, which is part of the development, is not within the purview of our yes or no.
Right.
If a house goes in, a street goes in.
Yeah. Uh, would you like me to open up public hearing? Come on down.
Yeah.
Come, I'm gonna reopen public hearing for you?
I'm not so sure that that 150, you guys are talking about the turnaround for the fire?
Well, my house is 1561 Mint. And, and on the corner of my house, there's a big fire hydrant right there. I don't think it's 150 feet from that fire hydrant to his property. So I don't know what they're saying when they said it has to be 150 feet. I don't think it is 150 feet.
Well, I think what they're saying is, uh, for the trucks, the truck access, but I'm not sure. Where are you at, right there?
Right on the corner, 1561.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to clarify, it's, it's 150 feet for the total length of the driveway. So including from the corner all the way to the end of Mint right now and then the continuation of the driveway that's proposed going up to the single-family homes, that exceeds the 150 feet.
Is it to the edge going in, or?
To the house, to the proposed house.
So it's, it's not just the street, it's all the way into the development?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Alright, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, you bet. I make a motion to close public hearing. Motion made by Commissioner Moreau, seconded by Commissioner Pollock Rude, please vote.
We're waiting for your, sorry, your vote.
Yeah, I know, I keep pushing, pushing the heck out of this thing.
Motion carries by unanimous vote of members present.
I think it comes down to the bottom line of Del Gashwan's houses. He wants a house. It's his property to develop. And even though the city has the street shown that he has to develop one way or another, it's his money. So we need to honor his request. And if he wants to seek more options, he can still do that with the city. He can take it to the city council. But I think our obligation is to the property owner.
Thank you. Any other comments, fellow commissioners?
No.
Okay.
Like I said.
Yeah.
Our hands are tied, I agree with Commissioner Circo.
Okay. Alright, well, if there's no more, I am gonna go ahead and make a motion to move to adopt the next resolution in order approving the sequoia exemption in TPM number 2021-0004, subject to conditions. Alright, motion made by Commissioner Moreau, seconded by Commissioner Pollock Rude, please vote.
Motion carries by a vote of 3-2-1 of members present.
Thank you. So just to clarify, we actually, I think, voted for Tres Lomas to go proceed, like, tonight. And then the neighbors came back to the city council with your, basically everything that you said because they actually have the power and made their case with the city council. And the city council actually denied the project. You know, we had to approve it based on our findings and based on what the applicant did. City council decided differently. And so this is something that I would definitely say pursue the city council. You know, Mayor Wells makes it clear, call his cell phone, set up meetings. It's probably the best avenue. Thank you, guys. Thank you for being here tonight. Alright, let me go to the agenda. Alright. At this time, is there any other items for consideration?
Uh, no additional items from staff, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner?
I just had a comment on the, it was triggered by the trees at the Naranca House. Do we have a tree preservation program where we incentivize developers to keep intact old-growth trees?
I believe it's discussed in the sustainability initiative.
Okay.
Uh, but those are not necessarily regulations that can be required.
Yeah. But it's not a regulation, but it's, there's incentives to keep them alive, intact and in place.
Correct.
And I would say, um, from a staff perspective, we're aware of unique features of land, whether that be trees or rock outcroppings or topography or other things. And we definitely work with developers to encourage the retention of those unique features that we know that the overall public has identified and treasures.
Hmm. Thank you. That's all I got.
Okay, I do have one quick question. I don't know what happened, maybe it's just my iPad, but when we used to get the agendas on the iPad, the subject area, the gray area was blue. And I don't know if you guys have a blue area on...
It's gray, but I can click it and it'll zoom, zoom there.
I've had, you can click it and it zooms? Because I was having a hard time all meeting, getting it to, okay.
It won't zoom back. So in order to go back, I use the back arrow with the line. That takes me all the way to the front of the agenda and then I just click on the next agenda item.
See, I'm almost 50, so you know, technology and me, we're kinda like, sort of friends.
I'm 50 and I still figure that one out, so...
Yeah, you know.
Hey, it was my Tandy 2000 that taught me programming.
There you go. Well, anything else, commissioners?
Nope.
Okay, alright, well then I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Alright, motion made by Commissioner Moreau, seconded by Commissioner Circo, please vote.
Motion carries by unanimous vote of members present.
Alright.